In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Broke call.
Okay. Robert Thomas has to be excused this evening. Councilman in Barson.
Here.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert LaCourte.
Here.
Sammy Chavon.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Here.
Mahir Rafiq.
Here.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Here.
Mark Dancy.
Here.
Before we get going into the agenda to make an announcement, we will only have one hearing tonight, which will be Macedonia Church of God. All the other ones, Onyx carried to January 15, 2025, at the Board of Ed Campus. We'll see whether that happens or not. Hsu Property Holdings carried to January 8, 2025, no further notification. And Rutgers Prep, there was an issue with the notification, which is why they're not on tonight, because it's carried to December 4, and notification is needed. All right. So with that, we have no minutes, so two resolutions. Hamilton Street Holdings LLC, who can vote on that?
Councilman in Barson, Mahir Rafiq, and Chairman Orsini cannot vote. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert LaCourte.
Yes.
Sammy Chavon.
Yep.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Yes.
Mark Dancy.
Yes.
The second resolution, Janson Pharmaceuticals.
Sammy Chavon, Jennifer Ragnow, Rebecca Hilbert, Mark Dancy, and Chairman Orsini cannot vote.
Miss a meeting, and look what happens.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Chairman, I'm sorry, Councilman in Barson.
Yes.
Theodore Chase.
Yes.
Robert LaCourte.
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq.
Yes.
And Charles Brown.
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any discussion items, so we'll open to the public. This portion of the meeting is for open public comment on any general planning issue. If you have a comment for the two witnesses, or what will be called for Macedonia Church of God and Christ, we wait for the meeting to be opened for that particular hearing. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public for any general planning comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open for anyone who wishes to comment on anything in general. Seeing no takers, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we get to our one hearing tonight, a continuation of Macedonia Church of God and Christ, and Peter is here to represent them.
Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a continuation of a hearing that started in June of this year. It was carried to two weeks ago. At that time, we presented testimony of our site engineer and also our traffic consultant. I had intended that evening to call our architect, but because of some confusion, he was not here. So this evening, I'm going to move to present the testimony of our architect, and I then have to present some planning testimony to justify the variances. As the board may recall, when we were here in June, there were some concerns regarding the size of the buildings, buffering, landscaping. We made significant, at least in our opinion, significant revisions to the plans to address those. We also, after you'll hear from Mr. Johnson, eliminated all of the seating in the balcony, and therefore eliminated the need for significant parking. So we will get into that with the testimony of Mr. O'Brien. Having said that, I have Mr. Johnson sworn.
Raise your right hand. solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you got.
Yes, I will.
Name an address for the record, please, Larry.
Lawrence C. Johnson. I trade as Larry C. Johnson. 40A Camner Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey.
Mr. Johnson, you can be seated. And also, please hold the microphone very close to your mouth, because if you hold it away, it doesn't get picked up.
Mr. Johnson is a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey in good standing.
Yes.
Accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, you are the architect of record on this project?
That is correct.
Okay. And when did we start this project?
My involvement started in 2010.
Okay. And your involvement included meetings with the church to ascertain their vision for this property, and you previously testified at one of the other hearings concerning the condition of the existing church, did you not?
Yes, I did.
Okay. When we were here at our meeting in June, the board suggested that perhaps the building was a little bit large, and that there was too much seating within the confines of the building. Did you make changes to the plan as a result of the comments of the board members?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And let's go back to this plan set. Yeah. You had it up before. No, you had the, that was his plan. That, yeah. Okay. So the, okay, the plan, the exhibit is part of the plan set that was submitted in conjunction with this application, Mr. Johnson?
That is correct.
Okay. And first of all, the size of the building, did you make any changes to the size of the building from the original plan set?
Yes. The building was originally 80 feet deep, and there was a 10-foot, I'm sorry, a 5-foot setback at the rear of the building. What I did was to shorten the building to 75 feet, and we have a 10-foot setback at the rear of the building.
Okay. And to the rear of the building, as was testified to at a prior hearing, is land that's owned by the township, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, did you make interior changes to the building?
Yes, I did.
All right. And if we can roll through the interior of the building, Mr. O'Brien? That is the lower level of the building?
That's the lower level of the building that is shortened by 5 feet on the main part of the building. The vestibule foundation remained the same, which is 8 feet.
Okay. And the lower level was basically a fellowship hall for gatherings after the church service, correct?
That and the toilet facilities, yes.
Okay. And the available seating in that lower level has not changed?
Has not changed, no.
Okay. Let's go to the next level. Okay. That is the main sanctuary.
Right. What I did with the main part of the building, the large rectangle of the building, was to incrementally shorten different parts of the building. The lobby, I took out about 18 inches, then in the main sanctuary, I took out about 2 feet, and then I took about another 18 inches out of the lower kitchen area. But then, what that helped me to do was to shorten the whole building by at least 5 feet, but not change the functionality of the building.
Okay. And when we made our original submission, the sanctuary area and the fixed seating within the lower level was 183 seats, correct?
Yes, that's what it is now.
Okay. And that hasn't changed from the original submission?
No. Well, we're talking about years and years, so the original submission...
You forget years and years ago.
Okay.
From the one we started with in June.
Yeah. From June, we made it 181 seats.
Okay. Now...
But it hasn't changed since the last few weeks ago.
Okay. And now we go to the balcony, which, or upper level, which was the subject of discussion at the previous hearing. In the original submission, part of the balcony had fixed seating, did it not?
We had 60 seats in the balcony.
Okay. Are there other functionalities of the balcony? There's other uses of that balcony?
Yes. The balcony has the audiovisual space, has toilet rooms, has an office, and of course, the elevator. And that brings people up, and then they can circulate to get to the baptismal pool and have two means of egress, which is in the diagonal corners of the building.
Okay. And in the last submission, you had put the phrase "upper level future seating" on your plan, correct?
That was correct.
And in reality, there is no intent now or in the future to have any seating in the balcony?
That is correct.
Okay. So we will amend the plan to remove that reference?
We did. It's, well, okay, yours doesn't have, yeah.
Okay.
And the one that's on the screen is...
Okay. And in addition, there was a concern if there was an upper level, and the area surrounding that upper level has had sort of a railing, did it not, in the original plan?
That is correct.
And did you decide to give the board a further assurance that this upper level cannot be used for seating?
Yes. We, instead of a rail around the upper level, so we can still maintain the ecclesiastical feel of the building, we put in 5-foot-high partitions around the perimeter of the upper level, and only have openings so that the cameras can film below and film the services.
Okay. And on the screens is a drawing of the upper level as it's viewed from the lower level, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I had submitted that to, I think, Mr. Clarkin and Mr. Healy, and I think Mr. Vignolo, within the last couple of weeks after you prepared that. Can we have that marked as an exhibit? And I think...
Do you have one that we can mark?
I have one in my briefcase.
Okay. The drawing is dated October 18, 2024, for the record.
That's the lower level?
That's the lower level.
Okay.
And I think I raised this in my email to you regarding this. It's saying eliminate the balcony. From what I understand, the balcony is still going to be there, but it's, instead of having a railing, it's going to have the 5-foot partition or wall.
No, the balcony was within the second level. The balcony consisted of tiered platforms that then had seating in it.
Okay.
That was taken out. The seating was taken out. But the second level, for the elevator, the office, the toilets, the room to lock up equipment, that's all on the second level. That's not in the balcony. There's no more balcony.
Okay. If you go back, Mr. O'Brien, if you can go back to the prior exhibit of the second level, can you blow that up or not? Okay. And if you, yeah, scroll over this. So the area that said future seating was where, in fact, on the original plan, was the balcony seating, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other functions up on the second level, as you just indicated, the elevator, the bathroom, the office, the audiovisual booth, and the stairwell, was always in the plan, and that is intended to remain?
Correct. So physically, it'll be, so basically, it'll be a walkway?
Yeah, that's for two means of egress.
Yeah. It's a walkway, it's a walkway around the perimeter of the building with a 5-foot-high wall. If we go back to the next exhibit, that 5-foot-high wall would go around all three sides. So it, there would be, it would basically encompass all three sides. So basically, the walkway is for people to either get up or get down if they didn't use the elevator.
And it looks like there's some other functions in the front. Can you go back to the last exhibit? I guess it also provides access to, you know, some utility functions and some other things on that second floor, so it provides access to those.
And the baptismal pool is on that level.
Okay.
What is that that is labeled "pool"?
It's a baptismal pool.
It is?
Yes.
Usually, that's on the ground floor.
That's why we make it different.
Okay. And then, just last question. The wall, this is a permanent wall?
Yes.
Okay.
You called it a partition previously. Is it a partition, or is it a wall?
Partition, the wall.
Well, to me, a partition is something that can be moved.
My interpretation is a wall goes from floor to ceiling and a...
Or floor to 5 feet, in this case.
If you want to call it a wall, you can call it a wall. It's a permanent structure.
Yeah, I think that's what's important. It's not something that can be...
No.
No.
I think the terminology, I was, that's why I asked the question, because again, I, partition is something that, you know, you can move it, you know? Banquet halls, you move the partition, and now you double the size of that room, that kind of thing. So it's a permanent wall.
Yeah. And actually, it functions as a barrier from below, so you can't remove it.
All right. So what I'm going to say, then, is that, because in the previous meeting, we were talking about the parking calcs, and because that area was open, and there was that label that was going to be used for future seating, I had to do that calculation where I had to include that as part of the worship area. If that's now going to be enclosed with a permanent wall, that's 5-foot-high, you know, I would make the judgment that that is now no longer part of the worship area. So the parking requirement on page four of my report, where I had indicated that would be technically 60 parking spaces required for that area, I would say that goes away. And the parking requirement would then be the 61 spaces for the sanctuary, and then the 30 spaces for the fellowship hall. So the overall parking requirement goes from, well, for the worship area, goes from 121 down to 61, and the overall goes down from 151 down to 91. Because again, the 60 spaces that I had indicated for the balcony have gone away.
And just so we can put that issue to bed, so we know what numbers we're talking about, and then Mr. O'Brien can testify, the ordinance requires one space for every three seats. So based on the testimony of Mr. Johnson this evening, and as calculated by Mr. Healy, there's 183 seats in the worship area, which has a parking requirement of 61 spaces. As was indicated at the last meeting by Mr. Troutman, we have, we've removed two parking spaces on the site to provide some screening and buffering, and have 36 parking spaces. We also have the agreement, which is a permanent agreement with RPM for 25 spaces, which was a contractual agreement. Just, I don't know if you're aware, Mr. Clark and Mr. Vignolo and I are talking about some language modifications to that agreement. It was actually signed by RPM. I delivered it to the township, and Mr. Clark, and Mr. Vignolo had a couple minor revisions, so we're working through that. So based on those two parking locations, then we would have the 61 parking spaces, which would be sufficient for the worship area. We still have the fellowship hall, which has 90 seats, as reported by Mr. Healy and on Mr. Johnson's plans, and by ordinance, those have to be counted, notwithstanding the fact that there was prior testimony from representatives of the church, that the fellowship area is not used during worship, and is only used by the congregants after worship. So the same people that are upstairs worshiping are the same people that will be downstairs. And therefore, although we need a parking variance, it's our position, and Mr. O'Brien will go into it a little further, but that the actual parking need is the 61 parking spaces. And if the board recollects back to June, we testified that we also have the ability to use PNC, and Mr. Clarken ruled that the board may consider that, but it's not binding because it's a revocable agreement. But that's also available based on the prior testimony. So I just wanted to bring the board up to date, since there's been gaps between the meetings. Having said that, I have...
Could you stop you for one sec, Pete, please?
Sure.
With respect to the permanent parking easement with Franklin Boulevard Commons Urban Renewal, the version that I have indicates in paragraph 3 that they have the right to terminate the easement in their sole discretion.
No, it was, that was the typo. That's what we're correcting. We have the right to terminate it. They, as was testified to at the prior hearing, when we sold land to RPM, part of the agreement in the sale to RPM was that they had to provide 25 parking spaces, because the land that we sold them, we were going to use as a parking lot. But unfortunately, with your redevelopment ordinance, we couldn't do that, because a parking lot as a standalone use is not permitted in the redevelopment zone, and you cannot apply for a use variance in the redevelopment zone. So therefore, we convey the property to RPM. We had a signed agreement with them that we would have 25 permanent parking spaces, which they agreed to, and I've been in communication with them, and actually, I represent them on a lot of their redevelopment work. But that was one thing that Mr. Vignolo pointed out. There were a couple other corrections that needed to be made. We actually do have a signed agreement from RPM, which we are correcting, and as soon as Mr. Vignolo approves the revised language, which I sent to him about a week ago, we will get it re-executed. But it is a permanent, irrevocable agreement.
And it's going to be recorded?
Yes.
Okay. If the board is of a mind to ultimately approve this application, my suggestion to the board, Mr. Chairman, would be that the form of the permanent parking easement has to be approved by council or the board, so that we are totally satisfied, all right, that it's irrevocable and cannot be terminated.
And I think what Mr. Vignolo suggested is, if there was any even modification to the agreement, it would require approval of the planning board, and that was going to be part of the language that was going to be inserted into the agreement, so that it cannot even be modified.
And Peter, just remind us, too, is that, is that limited to in time, or are those spaces available at any time?
Now, well, based on, based on the prior testimony of the members of the congregation and Mr. Troutman, the main time, main period of time where we may need those spaces is Sundays, which is the only time we have a religious services. We have them from 10 to 3. The agreement, and again, I don't know which version you have, is...
I have the 9:30 to 3:30 version, plus Christmas.
Plus Christmas, right. So that's when we would need the parking spaces. And I think it was testified to at the prior hearings, that all of the other events, like Bible study during the week, or choir practice, or any of those events, the 36 onsite parking spaces would be more than sufficient to handle those small groups that may come during the week for those types of activities. So there is only one day that there is any major activity. And again, if the board recollects from two weeks ago, Mr. Troutman indicated that he did a parking analysis of the whole neighborhood as far as the availability of parking on Sundays, which is, again, our main worship day. I have no more questions of Mr. Johnson, by the way.
I'm opening up to the board for any questions, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I had some thoughts aimed at reducing the variances required. Now, it may be that the rest of the board will say, we're not worried about those variances, but I just wanted to bring this up. I mean, the aisle widths of the parking lot, 24 feet requested, where 26 feet are required. And of course, that becomes important when a lot of people are backing out and trying to get out of the lot, as would be the case at the end of a service. The ordinance requirement could be met if the church building were made 4 feet narrower. If the seat rows had to be made 1 seat shorter as a result, those seats could be redistributed to the shortened front rows, maintaining the total seating. We've covered the balcony width at the rear. My thought was to make it even a little narrower, but I think you've thoroughly dealt with the possibility of seating there. And I asked about pools. The height variance could be eliminated by lowering the pitch of the roof. Perimeter buffering is not really needed towards the south, towards Paper, Camner Street, or towards Lot 23, which is township-owned and vacant, but it is needed towards Lot 12 to the west, beyond which there is a house. Some buffering is shown on the present plans, but not to the ordinance standards. And the reason why, a particular reason for having a dense buffering between a parking lot and a house is to avoid affecting the house with the headlights of vehicles entering or leaving the lot. Now, I don't know that you have any regular use in the evening. I think at this time of day, it... I think at this time of day, of course, it's dark by 5:00, but it's just a possibility to, I think there really should be buffering pretty close to the ordinance standard, which I think is a double row of evergreens and a stockade fence. I think we should do, I'd be satisfied with a single row and a fence, or possibly with two, a double row. Existing trees are shown along the border with Lot 23, and I wondered if these could be saved. It's always better to save existing trees when they're not actually within the footprint of the proposed building. The final thing I have to say is just a general comment. It's unfortunate that the township has resisted all efforts to make use of township-owned Lots 23 and 24 for additional onsite parking. I would think that surely some sort of long-term lease could be arranged, but I fear the township manager will have an argument against any such plan, as he has had for every other plan, despite Councilman Wright having made efforts along this line. Have you made any efforts along those lines?
When we started the initial hearing many months ago, it was discussed at that hearing that we should try to acquire the, those lots that are owned by the township. I did send a letter to the governing body requesting, or inquiring as to whether they had an interest in selling those lots. The problem is that they cannot sell them just to us. If they need to sell the lots, they have to put them up for bid, for auction.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then if somebody comes in and outbids us and wants to put a house on that lot, the township didn't want that to happen, so they concluded the best way to do it is to leave it the way it is. I never, quite frankly, made inquiry as to whether they would consider leasing the, those spaces for us. Like I said, we pursued other alternatives for parking, and we think we've adequately addressed it, but, you know, we followed that inquiry. The other thing, the plan does show evergreens. We can, we can--
Not evergreens, but also maples, which of course are deciduous.
We can change them all to evergreens, and we can also put a six-foot-high fence up. If the board recalls at the initial application, there was nothing back there because we wanted to maximize the parking, and that's why--
Yeah.
--we took out two parking spaces to provide that buffering. And I think the fence will deal with the issue of headlights. And also, it does shine on the side of the house. The house faces Booker Street, so--
Yeah.
I would come in. I respect Ted's proposal to address the variance issue for the parking, but I would not be in favor for reducing the building by four feet to accommodate two additional, what is that, 20, 24 to 26, to go up to 26. I, I think that's a, that's a real penalty for this proposed church building. I wouldn't do that. We've granted many two-way driving hours of 24 feet here, so I wouldn't be in favor of that. Also, in terms of the building, architecturally speaking, if the client has stated now that they will not be in exceeding on the second floor, why hold them to a partition wall when a railing would suffice? I think architecturally, it's going to take away from the plans that you're trying to do, when you could have just maintained the railing. So, Mark, I'm just curious why we need a partition wall when they've stated they're not going to do it anyway. They're going to no longer sit up there, right? And that wouldn't take away--
I mean, the board, I mean, that's a decision ultimately that the board can make, but--
Yeah.
You know, we've, I'd say a few things to consider. I mean, the history of the application was that it was, you know, they have the sanctuary down below, they had a balcony up above, and they had seating. Then they came back, verbally told us they weren't going to have seating, but then they had a note that said for future seating with the railing. So, and then, and then, so, you know, they clearly had the intent of having that area for the, for the purpose of having seating up there, which you can easily do with movable chairs.
Yeah.
So, and I've advised the board and warned the board, not with respect to this application, but frankly, every application, to not necess, to caution the board not to just rely upon staff's ability to police things like, "Is the church putting seats up there on their Sunday service?" That's impossible to enforce. Whereas if they, if they're agreeable to a change, to not have seating up there, and to have, you know, an actual physical barrier that prevents its use for additional seating, that's a permanent, actual, physical solution to that issue.
Yeah, I guess my thinking was, of course, these are church-going people, so they wouldn't do this. But hypothetically, it could be standing room only. And five feet, most adults can look over a five-foot partition wall, so you could still--
Not me.
Yeah, except me and you. Except me and you, we wouldn't be able to do that. But hypothetically, it could be done. But I think, then, that walkway area is too large, but we don't have to get into that. I think it is really massive. If it's not going to be for seating, then it could be shrank down for an appropriate walkway, which would take away the concern. Yes, sir?
Because the roof comes up--
Mm-hmm.
--you can't walk--
Okay, there might be--
I'm sorry. Because the roof starts low and comes up, you can't walk real close to the wall.
Got it. Okay.
So, you're only walking, it only gets to be seven feet, once it gets a few feet from the wall.
Yeah, you didn't show us that cross-section?
No, it's on there.
I don't, I don't see that, a person--
But that would refer to the walkways along the sides--
Right.
--rather than the area at the rear of the upper floor, which is what we've been talking about.
At the front.
My own thought is, pretty close to what you proposed. I thought it could be a little lower, so that standing people could look over and see what's going on, but seated people could not.
So, Charles, I'll--
Four and a half feet rather than five feet.
I'll use an analogy. For example, we've had situations in the past where the board members, board members were concerned about the dumpster being on that side of the site. And the applicant says, "Oh, we'll make sure, there won't be any deliveries before 7:00 a.m." I mean, whereas, so my suggestion would be, if you don't like the location there, then make them move it, put it over there, and put an enclosure around it. But don't rely upon their word that 10 years from now, they're not going to, that seven o'clock restriction's going to be abided by. That's impossible to enforce.
I'm in agreement with you. I am.
So, that's just, that's the thinking. That's where it comes from.
Yeah, I just didn't see a difference between a partition wall and a railing at the same height. That's the only difference. And I think architecturally, the railing looks better than the partition wall. So, that's why I was stating that. But I'm in agreement with you on that. That's all I have.
And we could decorate that partition wall. It's not going to be just a blank wall.
Great.
Any other board members have any questions for the architect? If not, we'll move on.
Just have one.
Oh, yeah, Jim, sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. I don't see any dimensions on the Exhibit A one that we marked into evidence. I'd like them to be revised, so that we know the dimensions of these walls and the dimension of the openings.
You can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I would say, too, that if, if the board was inclined to approve it, obviously, they have to change their plans, including the architectural plans, consistent with what they've testified to.
Sounds good. Okay, we can probably move on to your planner, and then we'll open to the pub.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
It's the only way to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth shall help you, guys.
Microphone.
Do I have another I do?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. O'Brien, you don't need any introduction to the board. I just assume any licensures haven't changed since we last saw you.
No change, Chairman. Still in good standing.
Excellent.
Mark never filed that. He threatened.
Floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
Mr. O'Brien, you have been here at all of the meetings that have taken place with respect to this application?
Yes, I have.
And you've heard all of the testimony of the witnesses concerning the use of this facility, the intended hours of operation, and how the building will function. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And as you are aware, we are seeking certain variances as a result of this application.
Correct.
Okay. Can you tell the board why we are here and what variances we are seeking?
Yes, we're seeking site plan approval and the C bulk variances. Bulk variances are requested for lot area, setbacks, height, impervious cover, and parking along with design waivers. The existing church dates back to 1948, and the applicant is proposing to build a new state-of-the-art church. State-of-the-art, from electronics down to modern HVAC. Adjacent land has been purchased, allowing the site to provide a parking lot. The church is a conforming house of worship, which is an inherently beneficial use under state law and the township. Following the July and October hearings, the church listened closely to the concerns, reduced seating, reduced building size, added landscaping, and removed parking spaces. The existing 1948-era church no longer serves the needs of this growing population. There is a 10-car parking lot, consists of a curb cut along both Booker and Fuller Streets, which means that everybody pulls in, either pulls in or backs in, and goes right out into the street. There's no separate parking lot. Excuse me. All stormwater runs off the site, and there is no ADA parking currently. The church sold two parcels across Booker to the Renaissance Project, which is in the redevelopment zone, and thus cannot be used by the church for parking or for any other use. The current church membership is 100 members. They do anticipate growth, and a larger church will help them achieve that goal. The continuous curb cut on both streets will be removed, adding 11 parking spaces where there are currently none. The 36-space landscape parking lot will be created with three ADA-accessible parking spaces on it, which is a vast improvement. An additional 25 spaces are available on Sundays in the mixed-use building parking lot on Booker. PNC, as we've discussed in our last two hearings, has agreed to let overflow parking park over there. As Mr. Clark has pointed out, you may wish to consider that, but it's, we're not using that towards our parking requirement. A total of 61 spaces are available to the church, which, as Mr. Healy has pointed out, meets the 61-space requirement, which is based on one parking space per three seats in the church.
Kevin, can I just jump in?
Yes.
Previously, there was a reference to two parking spaces being eliminated. Does, is the net 36, or is it 34?
The net is 36.
Originally, it was 38.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Since the August iteration.
All right.
Section 112-98 of the township ordinance does allow off-street parking facilities to be counted at half the rate for any use that is required, whose peak attendance will be at night or on Sundays. And the ordinance does say, quote, "such as, but not limited to churches, theaters, or assembly halls," unquote. So, we believe that also helps us in addressing the needs of the parking. The past 76 years that the church has been in existence at this space, since 1948, shows that the church members have been extremely flexible in their parking and finding spaces to park, particularly since now, the fellowship is up to 100 members. So, they've been using the street, the parking lot, the adjacent spaces already. They're familiar with that concept. In addition, the church has two 14-passenger vans. They transport members to services, and as the board knows, most attendees do travel with board members, excuse me, with church members, family members, friends. So, there are very, very few individual vehicles going. There's street parking in the neighborhood, which you heard from Mr. Troutman in our last meeting. A number of spaces are provided and empty, according to his counts on Sundays. Stormwater on-site will be collected in an underground detention basin, which is not the case today. Everything runs off. In short, I believe these are substantial improvements for the church, the neighborhood, and the township. The master plan does have a goal of providing adequate community services and facilities to serve the needs of all current and future residents of the township, and I believe this application supports those goals. In addition to that, this property is in the Renaissance infill zoning district, which has amongst its goals, G, improve the appearance of the corridor to provide a positive community identity, L, I'm sorry, the first one was G, L, preserve and upgrade existing stable residential areas, and S, to redevelopment land occupied by obsolete structures or uses. And this application meets those goals as well. In terms of the municipal land use law, we do meet a number of the goals of the MLUL in Section 40, colon, 55D, dash, 2. And among them are A, for Alpha, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state, in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. B, secure safety from flood and other disasters. G, provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And I promote a desirable visual environment. And I believe that this application meets those goals by providing an inherently beneficial house of worship. A new, fully code-compliant building will be constructed and replace a building that was built long before any of our modern safety codes. The religious needs of New Jersey citizens are met by this application, and a desirable visual environment is promoted by, as you can see, the beauty of the church. This is an inherently beneficial use, as I've said, which is a use that is universally considered to be of value to the community, because it fundamentally serves the public good and promotes the general welfare. In terms of a negative impact from this application, as an inherently beneficial use, I'm referring to what is known as the SEEK-a-balancing test. You've heard that many times over the years. And instead of saying that there's no substantial negative impact, instead, we go through the SEEK-a-balancing test, in which there are four steps. And the first step is to identify the public interest, and here, it's providing a church, house of worship. To identify the detrimental effects that would ensue should this variance be granted, site plan be granted, and I can't identify any. This is an infill development in a developed area, which is called for in the master plan and the Renaissance infill plan. Nuison landscaping throughout the site is proposed. A new, modern parking lot is proposed, as opposed to what's there now. This promotes a desirable visual environment. Item number three is the board should determine whether it can reduce any detrimental effect by imposing reasonable conditions. Over the course of this application, the board has been working with the applicant to make it a better application for the township and the members of the church, and you will continue to do so in your resolution. And lastly, the board should weigh the positive and negative criteria by balancing the public interest against the public detriment. And I believe the unidentified detriments are not supported, and instead, that providing the public interest of a house of worship outweighs any of those unidentified effects.
Mr. O'Brien, just a couple of quick questions. The variances that we are seeking are bulk variances. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And your testimony is based on the C1 or C2 criteria?
Oh, this is C1, because our lot area is undersized, but also C2, because this is a much better planning alternative. a much better planning alternative, I believe, and the board has shaped this as well over time. So I believe this is a much better planning alternative than what would be allowed under the ordinance.
Now, you're familiar with the area surrounding the church property, and that is in the Renaissance redevelopment. And over the last couple of years, there has been a significant amount of residential mid-rise development, correct?
There has been, yes.
Okay. And you heard the testimony of Mr. Troutman, and also have been to the site, and it appears that all of that residential development has parking to handle its needs because there is ample street parking, should it become necessary for the congregants of this church?
That is correct.
Okay. And the fact that around it has come residential development, doesn't not also really relate to the need to bring this church into modern times to serve as the members of the community?
One would expect that the hundreds and hundreds of new residents in the area seeking spiritual care would take a look at this 1948 church and not be terribly enthused, at least by appearance. Those, of course, who seek religious solace would go anyway, but I shouldn't speak to that part. This building, however, certainly is an attractive one that will bring interest to it.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I have no further questions.
Any questions of the board for Mr. O'Brien? Jim, please.
Because this is an inherently beneficial use under the case law, doesn't that relax the standard for assessing the positive and negative analysis?
It does indeed, Mr. Clarkin.
Notwithstanding that, can you give your opinion that the benefits of this application overall substantially outweigh any detriments?
Yes, I believe that they do, and I would also add that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance.
You stole the last question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So Jim, just a question to follow up on your first point there, for understanding of the board. When you say it relaxes the standards, what does that mean exactly? Does it mean that a 10-foot setback, or if it was required 15, all of a sudden it becomes 10? The ordinance is the ordinance. So when you say relaxed, do you mean in terms of relative balance?
In terms of relative balance.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions of the board for this witness? If not, I will make a motion to open to the public for any cross-examination or questions they may have. All in favor?
Aye.
Meaning is now open to the public for any comment on this application, and that means general comments or specific questions of the architect or planner? And when you come to the podium, if you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record if you're providing an opinion. I don't think you have to be sworn in. It's up to our attorney. If you're providing testimony, then we will swear you in.
Pete, are these church members that you represent, or?
These are all church members that I represent.
Okay. They speak through you.
Well, it's a little bit different than a private client, I think. Mr. Clarkin, if it was a private client, they probably wouldn't be allowed to speak, but I think this is a little bit different. And I think—I will ask them if they want to make statements, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to be brief, number one, and number two, try not to be repetitive.
That's fine. I think we should hear from the public.
Could you raise your right hand, please? Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God. Could you give us your name and address, please?
Afterne Owens, who live at 3 Victoria Drive in Somerset, New Jersey.
Please, go ahead.
I just wanted to stand to, just to say ditto to Mr. O'Brien, because I was sitting there thinking he's coming off—he has everything I wanted to say. And just to know that Macedonia, we're a small church, but we have a big heart, and we do a lot within the community, and we take care of anybody that comes by. We're always friendly. Our doors are always open. I've been there for the last 30 years. I've seen—there's been about three or four generations, and several family members, and now our children. So that's what we want to see. This church built not so much for us, but for our children and our children's children. And when he said about the church being there for over 70 years, and I think about the eyesore, as if we—if I just get up there and said about this church need to be rebuilt, they might condemn the church and take it. But it does need to be done, because the house of God should be as beautiful as our own home. And if that was my house, I wouldn't live in there. I'm gonna tell you the truth. God's house should be beautiful, much more beautiful than our own home. And this is a house of worship. This is where the house—where prayer. I mean, we shouldn't just wait till things happen to pray. We should pray at all times, and we should be able to go into a place and be able to kneel and pray, or if you have to sit down and pray, where the doors are always open. Years ago, the doors were always open. Now you can't leave them open, because you may come back and all your stuff is gone, your microphones, your equipment. But, you know, just to be there. Be there for people. That's the—just to be there. So let's say we're a small church, but with a big heart.[993.82][993.82](applause)
Raise your right hand, please. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
So help me God.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Severina Edward, 304 Dillian Court, North Brunswick, New Jersey, 08902. Good evening. I greet each member of the board in your respective places. As a member of Macedonia Church of God in Christ International, who happens to serve on the trustee board, I stand before you with this testimony in agreeance with my church family, my brothers and sisters, in support of the building of our new church. First off, we want to thank the planning board for your time in meeting with us. While this is only my third time here, I know that this has been quite a long journey for everyone involved. I've heard about it, and I've read about it. Macedonia, as one of our church members—mothers would say, 127 Fuller Street, has been a staple in the Franklin Township community and have been serving the Franklin Township community since 1948, about 76 years. As such, our mission has always been to deliver the Word of God and share the hope of Christ as written in the Holy Scriptures to the poor, the sick, the needy, and the downcast of Franklin Township. Through our multiple church outreach initiatives, including the Home and Foreign Missions Feeding the Hungry Program, which have provided hot meals, toiletry essentials, food drive, providing winter accessories to those in need, street ministries, and Thanksgiving baskets to families in need, to name the least. Through our education department, we held a school supplies drive, providing schoolbags with supplies to our youth in and around the community. We have donated to various organizations, much recently to the American Cancer Association. We've held musical programs that provide deterrence to gangs, guns, and violence, and in the past, our vacation Bible study that provides wholesome fun and educational activities for children during summer recess. We firmly believe that the Macedonia Church have been an asset to the Franklin Township community down through the years. There are additional programs at Macedonia that have been a positive impact on the Franklin Township community. That, to be honest, is far-reaching beyond Franklin Township community and spreads to the community around us. I'm a witness of that. I'm not originally from Franklin Township. I was actually born and raised on an island, and the Lord led me to this congregation, and it has changed my life immensely. As I mentioned before, this has been a long journey, and we have been back and forth with the board on just about everything concerning the church—concerning the building of the church, whether it's parking or building size, or the variants—required variances that's needed in order to comply with the township's zoning ordinances. We fully understand that in order to build our church, yes, we will require these variances, and we pray and we believe that Mr. Lanford and those who have testified on our behalf have clearly explained the benefits of us building this church. I'm gonna skip this whole part. The community around Macedonia have changed dramatically, and as we've seen at quite a bit of our services, there are new faces that we meet. We are building to accommodate what is to come, and as Mr. Troutman testified too, with certainly matched the character of the community around us. In addition, at its stance currently, our church does not have the capacity to allow for events that should be held at our church: weddings, funerals, Christmas get-togethers, to say the least. All of this are held elsewhere. But again, we simply cannot accommodate these events in our current state. Therefore, we need a new church. I don't think I can adequately summarize what the building of this new church meant and means to our church family, and I intentionally use both the past and present tense in that statement. We have members that have gone on to be with the Lord, who looked in anticipation for our new building. Our sister, Aura Payne, was our church representative and spearheaded this project, along with some of our other Board of Trustees members. She will not be here to see it to fruition, but was represented by her daughter at the last hearing. She did her part. Our church mother, Mother Louise T. Richardson, would always encourage us every first Sunday to give faithfully to our building fund, and would say, she may not be here to see it completed, but she did her part. And our church mother, Mother Betty Jean Marshall, who passed away on Saturday, faithful in her commitment to our church to ensure the church was cleaned and had what we needed when the doors were open. She would faithfully bake cakes to raise money for the building fund and look forward to the new church being built. She did her part. I have not been a part of this congregation—I'm sorry—I have been a part of this congregation for approximately 12 years, and my contributions pale in comparison to what some of my other brothers and sisters have contributed, both spiritually and naturally. Humbly and unselfishly, we can all testify how being a part of this congregation have changed our lives for the better, and as such, we will continue to reach out and help the community around us. That is who we are. That's discipleship, and again, the mission of our church. In closing, as we have throughout this entire process, we pray that we receive a yes and an approval of our application from you tonight to proceed with the next phase of this process. Again, we thank you for your time.[1383.82][1383.82](applause)
That's a tough act to follow, if anybody wants to try. Seeing no one else coming forward, a move to close the public portion?
Make a motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any final board comments before we move to a motion and a vote? No? Let me go ahead and try to frame this motion. So make a motion to approve with the variances noted, updated for the revised plans. All revised plans will need to have that upper balcony correct, as was testified to tonight, what it would be, and with the wall. We will need a revised copy of your memorandum of understanding with RPM and—
Satisfactory to the board's—
—satisfactory to the board's attorney approval. I believe Ted made some suggestions to buffering, which the applicant said they would comply with. The applicant also noted over the course of three hearings that they would comply with all staff reports, except where in the testimony we discussed it or any exceptions were made. What else am I missing? Am I missing anything?
The only other one possibly is to require that the two 14-passenger vans always be made available.
We have no problem with that.
I will add that. And so that is my motion.
Chairman, did you add that if the RPM agreement were to change, that they would need to—
Good point. Thanks, Sammy. Yes, I'll amend that to add that if at any point in the future, the RPM agreement to which you agreed, our board attorney will review and sign off on, changes, it is also subject to board attorney review.
You said that was in there, in the latest version.
That was requested by Mr. Vignolo. It is in the last version. I sent to him, so it's already covered.
Still has amended.
And I think in crafting the resolution, we'll have to review the minutes. There may have been one or two things said over the previous meetings that are reflected in the minutes that we'll put in the resolution. Mr. Lanford did say again tonight that the fellowship hall will not be used at the same time as the sanctuary. I'm sure there was a statement to the fact that it wouldn't be rented out to outside parties, you know, either of the sanctuary. I'm sure the sanctuary wouldn't, or the fellowship hall wouldn't be rented out to outside. I'm sure there are other statements to that effect.
We made—I made statements that were part of one of your prior reports, that we would have no outdoor activities like carnivals or fairs or anything else outside. But yeah, we should review the minutes to make sure we got them all covered.
Yeah. Ultimately, a motion is a motion and not intended to be an all-encompassing resolution, which obviously is voted on a second time. So with that, I'll ask a question.
A second.
Christine, please call the roll.
Councilman in Bowerson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCorte?
Yes.
Sammy Chavon?
Yes.
Jennifer—
Sorry. I remember we were supposed to give explanations why we say yes, so I wasn't sure if you wanted us to go through that.
You can certainly do that.
Okay. So I do agree with much of what was said in terms of the safety protocols being updated, the beautification being updated, and the fact that there's an inherent good that comes with this building of the center, and that much outweighs all of the other variances or restrictions that we had discussed. So for those reasons, I would approve this application. Thank you.
Thanks, Sammy.
Jennifer Ragnow?
Thank you for all that you do for the community, yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Chairman Rossini?
So my explanation is the following. This was actually tough for me, and the reason it was tough was because of a statement that I still can't square in my head, which is—and I believe it was given—this testimony is given by Ms. Edwards in the first hearing. We heard seven years of how many families were in the parish, and there was no demonstrable growth. So what I couldn't square with that, you know, it's not like you went from 50 to 75 to 100 to 150 to 200, and now you're bursting at the seams. It stayed fairly constant. And so the need for such a large building that would necessitate so many variances was hard to square with that testimony. That being said, I struggle to think whatever other use there would be there, or where the church would go, and then we'd have to find a larger lot. Been in the community for a long time. I do take, you know, the testimony that Mr. O'Brien gave about the benefits outweighing the detriments substantially. I don't like that many variances, but I also struggle to see a better use for this property than is currently there, and without a doubt, for many of the reasons Mr. O'Brien stated, I think bringing the church up to a modern standard is probably beneficial to the community. And I think some hesitance go away was the substantial reduction in parking by reducing or eliminating any seating in the balcony. That's a long-winded way of saying I also vote yes, but I wanted to give an explanation.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your input, your patience, and your considerations. Thank you.
Do we have any other business tonight, Christine? If not, I make a motion to adjourn.
Side of the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting is going to be in two weeks, right? Right. All right.[1786.41][1786.41](applause) That's the way I came in.
I know.